I will call this meeting to order. Would you please join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, I'd like to welcome everyone this evening, both here and at home. Tonight's agenda consists of the consent for the minutes, public hearing for the UDC text amendment, site plan design review, and a preliminary plat for Einstein Brothers Bagels, preliminary plat and final plat for Santa Fe Blue Springs. That being said, before we begin, I would like Mr. Sullivan, would you join me, please? I just want to tell you how much we have appreciated. One year is of service on the planning commission, eight years, and we have served as chairman and done a wonderful job. You research your projects, you always have wonderful questions, and I will very definitely appreciate you. Thank you so very much.
Thank you, thank you very much. You know, I was saying earlier how much things do change over the years. Susan and George and Kim are the only ones that have preceded me or have outlasted me on this commission. George Bush was president, Brown, Grounds was chairman, but some things never changed. Susan was chairman of this group when I came on, so, but it's been a good eight years, and I wish all of you well.
Thank you very much. I did ask Mr. Sullivan what he was going to do with his Monday nights, and he said he wasn't sure he was going to watch us on TV, so...
Not unless I get some sound on that.
All right, our first item is the consent agenda, which consists of the minutes from the prior meeting. I would entertain a motion.
I move to approve the minutes of the last meeting.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The next item is a public hearing for the Unified Development Code text amendment. We will hear, let me find my deals here, we will have a staff presentation, and any questions from the commission, if we have anyone in the audience who wishes to speak, either for or against, we will then bring it back up here on the record, and then I will close the public hearing. That being said, Mr. McDonald?
Madam Chair, the city has three exhibits. Number one is a staff report with attachments. Number two is the affidavit of publication in the Blue Springs Examiner. Number three is the application with attachments. Those are all of the exhibits the city would offer into the record at this time, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald. Mr. Allen?
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the commission. Before you this evening is a request to modify the Unified Development Code specifically related to the permitted maximum percentage of coverage for driveways serving single-family or duplex uses. This was brought to staff's attention a few months ago with recent construction down in Eagles Ridge subdivision in particular. As it stands, the Unified Development Code does not allow driveway coverage to exceed 35 percent of the exterior setback area. That is essentially the front yard of single-family and duplex homes. And two of the builders down in Eagles Ridge, Soli Homes and Summit Custom Homes, came forward to staff and then brought it forward to the Development Advisory Commission as they were beginning to review the 2012 international building codes. For the review and discussion of those, they brought forward this issue, presented the fact that a number of lots, especially with newer subdivisions, are becoming narrower, and therefore a percentage obviously is going to shrink as lots get narrower. So, a three-car garage may fit on a 75-foot wide lot or 70-foot wide lot, but 35 percent coverage is really minimizes the access to, especially to that third-car garage. So, with that, they provided some compelling evidence, and staff then proceeded under the direction of the Development Advisory Commission to research and review what other communities are doing regarding coverage of driveways. That's spelled out in a lot of detail from Jim Holly's memo that was provided to you in the packet. We, Mr. Holly did provide an analysis, kind of looking at some different options, above and beyond just changing the percent number. The DAC, again with the conversation they had with those builders, looked at simply moving it to a 50 percent coverage. The number of communities do have something somewhat similar, some even have up to 60 percent coverage, and they felt that 50 percent would be reasonable, especially with the lots that they were developing. Looking at, again, this would not affect just new construction of new homes, but also, reconstructed driveways, new driveways on existing homes that may be on larger lots, the flat 50 percent allowance may be a little bit too open-ended, as it were, especially if you have larger lot subdivisions, a 50 percent coverage could get quite unwellly, potentially. Obviously, with the cost of concrete and such, that may not be reasonable, but as we all know with standards in the UDC, reasonableness is one thing, and the far extent of possibility is another thing. And so, that's what we looked at as staff, is what is the absolute largest extent that somebody could take this if it were to be just a 50 percent rule. So, with that in mind, we looked at, particularly Overland Park had a good kind of narrative or explanation with their restrictions, and staff then is providing that as an option for the planning commission to consider, as you discussed this, again, either just the flat changing 35 percent to 50 percent, as the DAC recommended, or doing something similar, which was, again, provided with a modified memorandum to you this evening. I can certainly read that, but the idea behind it is essentially allowing driveway width, excuse me, driveway coverage to extend perpendicularly that is from the edges of the garage doors out to the street. So, trying to get away from that strange triangular throat that then kind of flares back out at the driveway apron, and allowing that to go straight to the street if it does not exceed, this is the addition of the memo tonight from Jim, does not exceed that 50 percent. So, essentially still emphasizing 35 percent coverage, if it does work for a lot, again, a larger lot, 35 percent may cover that. The narrower lots, 50 percent may be more appropriate. So, the idea here is that it allows some flexibility based in the context of the size of the lot. So, that may be a little bit confusing, so we're certainly answering the questions if there are any.
Would you review, when we spoke earlier, the situation where you have a duplex and the driveway on the far end of both of those?
Sure, thank you. And that's where the conversation with Mr. McDonald as well. As you may be familiar, not long ago, I should say, David Ward came forward with some duplexes in Eagles Ridge, and he provided some different layouts or schematics of what that could look like, you know, garage doors, excuse me, garages right next to each other with the living units on kind of bookends, a living unit garage, living unit garage alternating. Or, an example that you're mentioning, Madam Chair, is the two living units side by side with the garages as the bookends. And as we read the initial recommendation, or option I should say, that we provide to you in the packet, it would be possible, again, however unlikely or unreasonable it may be, it still would be possible to, the way it was written, to provide the largest driveway you've ever seen, something that would extend from the one bookended garage all the way over to the other, the way it was written. Because the way it was written was that it could extend from one outside edge to the other outside edge. Again, you could read it as meaning, it could fit into that definition. And so, that being the case, and certainly not being intent, we provided the modified language with Mr. McDonald's assistance that essentially is looking, it's almost identical, would you say, Jim, to what the cul-de-sac language is, and that was, the cul-de-sac lots is where we add a little bit more of the contextual description in the code, where you look at the 50 percent. This is essentially making it very similar to what that is. So, rather than just flat-out changing the number, we gave a little bit more context based on the type of, the number of garages essentially where they located and the size of the lot, without getting too verbose, like my presentation, and doing it in as short of a textual narrative as we could make it.
Very good. Does anyone have any questions? Mr. Trozen?
Mr. Allen, in regards, I hope I can describe this, but if you can visualize.
Yes, I wish I had something to, I followed that as I was coming here tonight, yes.
But if you think of a single-family structure or even a duplex that has an attached garage, sometimes that attached garage is set back a little bit from the house, and also the garage portion, as far as the interior of the garage, is extended beyond that garage door so that when you pull in, you can open your door or store things along the wall. If I read this correctly, the driveway will come perpendicular with the garage door out to the street.
Yes.
But in some cases, when you have that offset, in past, driveways have extended over to at least that offset in the house and then gone out to the street, because that gives you a little bit more driveway beyond the garage door, if that makes sense.
Yes. Now, the way we have it described here is in relation to that coverage percentage. I'll correct me if I'm wrong, I've got Jim and Bob here to back me up as the resident experts here, but the idea being, you can have that perpendicular extension, again, if it does not exceed, for example, here, that 50 percent. So, if you're 40 percent and you have, if that's correct now, you could have that additional piece on the outside, but as long as it doesn't exceed that 50 percent.
Well, I think that the way that the alternative or the ordinance is, the alternative ordinance is written is it really does extend from the outside edge of the garage doors. So, you're right, you couldn't do that if you had in excess of 35 percent coverage. If you have 35 percent coverage, then of course, you can extend that driveway further, you can extend that driveway further out. Does that make sense?
Thank you, sorry, my numbers are wrong, sorry. But yes, if you don't exceed that 35 percent, you can have that extra piece kind of extending to that outside edge of the actual garage itself.
So, why don't you just deal with the percentages versus the perpendicular?
That's the other option here, exactly. That's the other option, just the 50 percent as being an option. But again, we're looking at kind of worst-case scenario. That was brought up at the DAC's, perhaps, you know, where we're talking, the emphasis from those builders coming forward was on new construction. If someone had a 100-foot wide lot, technically they could have a 50-foot wide driveway.
And one of the-
Again, it would have to taper down, because there is, what we didn't provide here is there's a maximum 30-foot wide apron. But the point being, you could essentially have a 50-foot wide driveway. Again, that's at the planning commission's discretion, so counsel in following this. If that's agreeable, I mean, staff's just giving different options as to whether that would be, that was discussed at the DAC as perhaps not a green package.
I just think that you might create another green area that you require the homeowner or builder to create versus like that triangle that you're trying to eliminate.
Mr. Graham?
Just kind of following up with what Mr. Trozen was saying, because you very rarely pour the drive right at the edge of the door, you're usually a foot or so past, and kind of like the Overland Park ordinance is reading, they don't say from the outermost courses of the doors, they say the width of the garage, which will also kind of solve your duplex scenario, because you'd have a garage over here and a garage over here that you would come straight out to the street from, and that wouldn't allow for paving in the middle.
Sure.
Because normally, if you have, say, a 20-foot wide garage with a 16-foot door, you almost pave pretty much out that 20 feet, that extra two feet on each side, and this wouldn't allow for that.
Yeah, as long as it didn't exceed that percentage.
If you didn't exceed the 35 percent, you'd be fine, but if you were in the situation on one of these lots and you were exceeding the 35 percent, you'd have to start narrowing it in, and you're going to have an aesthetics thing, I think it's going to look strange if you're right at the edge of the garage.
So, with this discussion, it sounds like perhaps the word "door" maybe something could be a limiting point.
Yes.
Yeah, one of the things that was discussed was the fact that we have some, people have gone in and poured concrete off to the side and then taken it down around the side of the house and created parking pad, which is something we really would not like to see on our new construction.
Well, and that brings up a good point. Was there any consideration on impervious coverage as far as the lot? So, we're talking about sidewalks, we're talking about patio, that made, somebody may consider a patio, but others may drive their car onto it.
We brought that up with Public Works and looking back at the original intent with the 1996 UDC language, which is where this is from. It really was just an aesthetics issue, it wasn't really stormwater management or pervious surface issue with the 35 percent. So, again, the intent could be read several different ways, but kind of going back in the archives, it was simply aesthetics.
Mr. Phillips?
I had two things, and first was to echo what Mr. Trozen said. Aesthetically, I think you don't want it to come right up to those doors. I think if you had that straight line from the driveway and then going straight up the door, it's not going to look right. I think you need to have some overlap out there. The second question, and I think you kind of touched on something here, is there is a separate rules, set of rules for a pie-shaped lot in a cul-de-sac?
Yes.
How does that work?
I can try to pull that up.
Because my lot is that way, and this straight line perpendicular from the house would not work in my lot, because then I'd be running my driveway across my neighbor's yard. So, I have to have a curve in my driveway. So, maybe it's the width that we want, being a uniform width all the way out to the street rather than a perpendicular straight line.
I see.
This ordinance doesn't, uh... Address that, but the previous ordinance, the ordinance in effect right now just changed it from 35 to 50, allowing 50 percent coverage for a cul-de-sac lot.
So, a cul-de-sac lot is just a straight percentage at 50 percent, so that allows the curve or whatever is necessary to get out to the street, and this wouldn't apply there?
Yes, I apologize, I don't have that language in front of me, but yeah, there's a little additional language. You're right, not necessarily the perpendicular commentary, but there's more than just flat-out says 50 percent.
As long as there's a allowance somewhere else for where perpendicular line wouldn't work.
Sure, sure. Yes, cul-de-sac would confirm.
Madam Chair, I have a question then. I'm reading your, the amended here. Is that what we're looking at?
Yes.
And then, if we look at the cul-de-sac and what the other commissioners have said, then you're looking at the 35 percent, the 50 percent, but there's no, nothing that says anything about your 30-foot wide apron.
Correct, that is a separate.
So, that's separate then, a cul-de-sac?
Yes, that's already in the code on Jim or Bob, if you remember where that is.
I think that's under chapter 406, which is the subdivision portion of the ordinance, and it has to do with driveways, and that's actually at the discretion of the city engineer. So, for instance, if you come and make a valid and good argument to the city engineer, the city engineer then has the authority to allow that driveway width to increase, that throat width to increase.
But that's separate from what we're addressing right now.
Right.
Yes, no, I'm just saying- It's separate but related, exactly, yeah.
Okay. So, are we going to keep in the perpendicular?
If there's a, if there's an allowance for the pie-shaped lots somewhere else, then I'm okay with the perpendicular.
So, my understanding, what I'm hearing is the only thing we're actually looking at is taking it to the edge of the garage structure as opposed to the opening for the garage door. And is that what I'm hearing? Is that the consensus here?
Still subject to the 50 percent limitation.
Yes, yes.
The perpendicular issue doesn't prevent you from having a tapered driveway. It just, it just prevents you, it has to be perpendicular, and it can't be wider than whatever we set the outer limits on. And it has to be within 50 percent.
Right, but like on my driveway at home, the width is uniform, but it curves, so it wouldn't be, the perpendicular line would not work.
Are we talking imaginary line or actual?
To tell you the truth, having sort of through this quite a bit today, I don't, anything you come up with has problems, you know, and, and I said at one point, maybe that, just say in the 50 percent's the simplest thing, and, you know, do it that way. We want to, but we kind of want to avoid driveways that curve all over the front yard. But it's sometimes maybe they have to, you know, so it doesn't really work.
Well, and sometimes, again, on an estate-type home, you might want a driveway that, you know, makes that circle around across the front door or something, I mean, you know.
Well, the scenario I provided, and again, I agree with Bob, it may be the simplest, and we don't run into it often, but the scenario I provided in the memo is one that particularly comes to my mind, because if somebody is allowed to build that driveway right up to the property line and then park their really old pickup right next to that property line, it upsets the neighbor who is immediately adjacent. And we were fortunate in that we had a means to enforce against that at the time and get them to remove that portion of the driveway and put that truck back over off the property line. Again, how often does that happen? Not very often. I can think of one time.
But one is more than enough.
But with the 50, with the straight 50 percent coverage, you've set that up for the existing neighborhoods for a person to be able to do that.
Again, our charge is to think worst-case scenario. Realistic, reasonable or not, it's, that's-
So, there's no kind of a paving setback on the sideline?
No. Because there are, like you mentioned cul-de-sac, many times I've seen driveways that the aprons end up touching, just because they have to, just how the spokes radiate. end up touching, just because they have to, just how the spokes radiate into that center cul-de-sac. So having a setback is difficult in situations.
But there again, the cul-de-sac issue is addressed.
True, except as I think Mr. Phillips is suggesting, as Jim noted, it's, you know, maybe possible to look at a setback restriction for paving, take it away from the worst-case scenario. But there are setbacks again, that, again, as Bob mentioned.
You've got to be careful if you put some kind of a setback restriction on a square lot, but not on a pie-shaped lot or something.
Yeah, no, you can't do that.
You don't want to do something like that, so.
But you're going to correct that problem on the setback because, like on the side, if you do it like Overland Parks, that garage is going to have a setback requirement.
Yes.
So if you do do it perpendicular to the, to the edge of the garage, then you've created then a setback on that driveway from the property line.
It's what, ten feet, isn't it?
Oh, eight feet, excuse me.
Eight feet.
Typically, depends on the zone district, yes.
But that definitely prevents it from going right up to the property line.
Sure.
And someone parking their vehicle on the property line.
And again, that's when you exceed that thirty-five percent. So somebody could have a smaller driveway that could still go up to the side yard and up to the property line and not exceed the thirty-five percent, and therefore this wouldn't apply. So that's kind of the, that's the trigger here. We keep going back to the, if you want to exceed that thirty-five percent, it has to fit into these requirements. If a development or driveway comes in at forty-four point nine percent, the perpendicular, all those things don't apply. Is it just the idea, again, to give an allowance that if you want to exceed the thirty-five percent, here are your additional restrictions to ensure that you don't have overwhelming driveway that's golfing the entire front yard.
Any other questions for staff? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do we have anyone in the audience who wishes to speak on this issue? Seeing none, I will bring it back up here on the record for additional discussion.
Well, I guess I still just have a problem or concern with the perpendicular to the garage doors. I guess I'm still just getting hung up a little bit on that.
I think we can address that, and I think we're all in consensus that that's, that's okay to do that.
Okay.
All right, I will close the public hearing. Any other discussion? I would entertain a motion.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Phillips?
I would make a motion that we recommend approval of the new ordinance, UDCT five twelve three four three three, as staff has put us in this last memorandum, with the exception of removing the two words "doors" from the ordinance. So it says "from the garage" instead of "from the garage doors."
Second. I have a motion as second. Roll call, please. Commissioner Sullivan.
Aye.
Commissioner Wallace.
Aye.
Commissioner Phillips.
Aye.
Commissioner Duhon.
Aye.
Commissioner Graham.
Aye.
Commissioner Haney.
Aye.
Commissioner Banks.
Aye.
Commissioner Trozen.
Aye.
Chairman Culpepper.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, that brings us to item number three. We'll hear three and four together, vote on them separately, please. The site plan design review for Einstein Brother Bagels and the preliminary plat. Mr. Hawley.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioner, that's coming through.
This request is for a site plan design review, and I'm going to start right off unfortunately with the correction. This has nothing to do with constructing, constructing a new restaurant. It is a site plan design review for a drive-through addition to the existing twenty-nine, two thousand nine hundred and nine square foot restaurant. There was some talk back and forth about that, and it was cleared up, and there in fact is not a new building going to be constructed on this property. This particular address is two ten North Seven Highway, it is located on the east side of North Seven Highway, south of Northwest Vesper and north of Northwest-
Mr. Hawley?
Lakeview. Right. And the yellow light means, wait, I got that. Okay. Okay, I guess that's better because we have green light. That means we can go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate that.
From the preliminary plat standpoint, we're dealing with about a point four eight two acre piece of ground that has never been platted. It is zoned for general business, GB is the zoning, and this is going through site plan and design review as per section four oh three oh seven oh, which requires any development involving a building or any material change in use or appearance of the parcel of land in the act of building improvements on that land and the drive-through service, as well as some reconfiguration of the parking and some addition of landscaping, all of those things have to meet that criteria for development. Again, the existing bagel shop is about two thousand nine hundred and ninety square feet. It currently offers a dine-in and a takeout service. The, it has some outdoor seating, although the outdoor seating is, is just some tables sat out in front of the, in front of the restaurant itself. They're going to try to formalize that a little bit by putting it all into one area at the, I guess it would be the northwest corner of their, of their existing building. Access to the property is from Seven Highway. Let's put this on there. And the access will remain the same from Seven Highway. The applicant is currently proposing about twenty, well, exactly twenty parking spaces, and fifteen spaces are required. There, the, one of the suggestions later, and I'm jumping around, I apologize a little bit in the report, but one of the recommendations later is that they may look at reconfiguring this parking that is located on the south side of their building to an angled parking. And if they were to choose to do that, it would, it would reduce their parking by one spot, but it may, may make it easier for people accessing those parking spaces and then, and then leaving those parking spaces if they were more directional, particularly given that the drive-through now will come along, and staff, at least a portion of it will staff along the south side of the building. They, they will need to show one loading and unloading space, it can be in tandem with a parking space, I'm sure they have it, they probably just didn't seem to show it. We've asked them to do that in condition number three. The sidewalks, there currently are no sidewalks along our Seven Highway, along this particular front, and we are requiring that they put a five-foot sidewalk in. As I said in the staff report, when we, when we did a site visit, we noticed that there is a fire hydrant and some other public occurrences in that area. It may make them have to meander that sidewalk, part of it may end up coming into their landscape area, that's fine from our perspective, we will need a, we will need a landscape easement if it does have to meander onto their property so that we can keep that sidewalk, but we'll certainly work with them to figure out how that's going to work, and that's reflected in condition number four of the site plan design review report and condition number three of the preliminary plat report. The property does currently have a dumpster enclosure, however, they're moving it to the north side of the building. That, with the drive-through lane and the landscaping on the north side, they're tucking their, they're tucking their dumpster enclosure right into this area. Staff certainly think that's a good area to put the enclosure, and that is, relates to condition number five that just says they need to show the details of the construction on their building permit plans. The landscaping as it exists right now is currently non-conforming. With the landscape additions that they propose to put in, it will bring it much closer to conforming, and given that there is very little landscaping on this property, if any right now, the landscaping that they add will truly have an impact on the property. The chart is provided with regard to landscaping primarily on page six of nine, and as you can see, the, this particular property, if it were to be brought into compliance, would require a hundred and forty-five plant units, and that would include then their buffer, their parking lot landscaping, as well as their open space. They are providing eighty-one point five plant units, and I think there is a landscape plan that's included in your packet. And that gives you a good idea of where their plant units are, primarily the trees along North Seven, or along, yeah, North Seven Highway certainly will add to that, that fringe or the appearance of that fringe, and then they have some landscaping along the dash, and it'll be south, the south and southwest and northwest corners of the parking lot. Eventually, they will still be sixty-three plant units short, but they do not need to bring this property into compliance with current standards because they are not exceeding the twenty-five percent building addition requirement. The access to this property and to the drive-through does cross over the property lines, so that as they enter in the south driveway, they will be on the adjacent property to the south, which is the same property that is to the east, and as they go through the order lane, they will be on a different property as they go through that south side of the building, and the order box is located there. They do have access agreements, and those access agreements are, were provided with your report, so they're set to do that. It's allowed through the access agreements, and it's all really owned, I think, by one company. They just separated some lots there. As far as the architecture goes, the applicant is proposing to refresh the exterior facade. I thank Councilman Corbell for bringing it to my attention that, that their elevation, their directional elevations were not correct, but I think I corrected them on there, and I think, think that I didn't look that closely, but I found out they were just refreshing, just painting and putting new facades on, and I'm just kind of looking for that, this elevation, I didn't have to see it stay there. At any rate, that gives you an idea of what they're looking at as far as, as far as you paint and adding some black awnings. They will eventually come in with some signage that will go on those awnings as well as the building, and those will be handled administratively. With that, staff recommends approval of the site plan and design review with six conditions, and of the preliminary plat, we recommend approval with two conditions, and stand for any questions.
Any questions for staff?
Since this is not a twenty-five percent increase to the building, do we have the right to require them to put a sidewalk in front of the building?
That is part of the plating process, and that is a public improvement, and so yes, we do have, we do have the ability to do that through the plating process.
All right. And it looks to me like, if I see this right, the drive-in, drive-through, you have to cross over that to get to the seating area?
No.
Am I looking incorrectly?
The seating area. Let me go back to the site plan a little bit, because maybe I'm misunderstanding. The way that the drive-through will work is, is you will come in this lane, and you will be on the, again, on the adjacent property to the south, and you will drive through an order in here, and then you will drive up and pick up, the pickup window is approximately here, pick up your order, and then you will drive back through this way, and the seating area is located here, so you really will drive adjacent to, but you won't drive between or through.
Yeah, good.
At this point, we have not seen it, but it could be there. Let's look at their landscape plan. Yes, they will have, actually, I think they're going to do decorative foliage, is what I can say. So there will be decorative foliage along, and the applicant can probably address this as well, but it will be along, where this line right there is, unless they change that to fencing, in which they haven't seen that, that would be, and you can look at that through the building process.
Mr. Phillips?
Was there any discussion about rotating that trash enclosure so the doors were not facing, partially facing Seven Highway, having them kind of go toward the rear instead of toward the front?
Yes, actually, there were discussions about that trash enclosure being in a completely different location at one point.
I'm okay with the location, I just kind of like have it rotated ninety degrees.
You'd like to have it rotated, and I, I think it had to do with access to the dumpster enclosure without interfering with any, with any of their drive-through, with any of their drive-through, and maybe, but again, the applicant, I believe, is here, may be able to address that, or I know there was discussion about where that dumpster enclosure is going out based, and this is where they're going to go.
Okay, and you were talking about angling parking on the north side. Which way are you talking about angling it?
This is going to sound a little odd, but I thought, and actually had a diagram that I did-
On the south, I'm sorry, yeah, on the south side, yeah.
I thought of angling it this way, and I'll tell you why. If you don't angle it a whole lot, rather than ninety, if you use some slightly different angle, a car would have to come, come, and, and as they came in the driveway, they would take a wide turn to get into that space. But when they leave that space, they're backing out into the exit lane, and it would make it a lot easier than the straight-out backing and turning. Again, it was, I, I put it as a suggestion, not a requirement, because, in fact, they meet the code.
And that was, because when I, when you first said parallel parking, I had it in my head the other direction, and I was trying to figure out how it worked. Is there any concern about, or any kind of markings to make sure that if there is a stack-up from that order kiosk, that we don't start blocking those parking spaces? And I know that you're, there's two lanes there, and they're supposed to be in the far lane as they're stacking, but I know if I were coming in there and it wasn't really marked out very well, I'd probably be right up against those parking spaces rather than one lane over as I'm lined up to get into that lane.
That, that was a concern, and I agree with you. They are able to meet the code because they have the mutual access, and certainly the in driveway, or the driveway that moves east in an easterly direction, and then it's supposed to go through the drive-through, allows room for, for cars regardless of which configuration they use to, to back out and then proceed out. But I'm with you. Unless this is well-marked, when I pull in this driveway and then coming through the drive-through, I probably will just come zooming right up this way and pull right into the drive-through lane, and if there's a car right here, I would stack there. They'll have to put markings out there, there's no question, or that, I believe that people will do that as well.
And kind of as a follow-up to that, and they were talking about the studies that they had done about the stacking, and at one point, they were talking about a possibility of three, maybe even one-time four cars being stacked up, were they stacked up behind the pickup window or behind the order kiosk? Because if they're stacked up at the order kiosk, that's going to really pull it right around, if they're stacked up, and you could shift those ordering kiosks to the other end of the building and maybe give you one more car before you get into that situation?
Well-
Am I being clear?
You are being clear. The ordering kiosk is, is placed where it is so that it allows for four cars to stack from the window after the ordering kiosk, and that's a code requirement.
Okay.
You have to have those four cars. And because it's a small building and a tight site, I don't think they have a lot of options. Certainly not with this site plan, they don't have a lot of options.
So the code plan is that the stacking is going to be at the window, not at the ordering?
Yeah, the code requires eight spaces, eight stacking spaces for a drive-through for a restaurant, and four of those spaces have to be between the window and the order kiosk, the other four then can be from the order kiosk back. So it, it, it does impact how you have to configure, and on a small site like this with a small building, there's nothing, I don't think it anticipates one way or another, and I understand what you're saying, if there are, if there are four cars and they're starting to queue from the order kiosk, they will be back in this parking area, I mean, that's, again, that's why we had to get the access agreement. I mean, that, and that's, again, that's why we had to get the access agreement, make sure we had that access agreement, and that's part of what I think is the marking, and that's also why I suggested the angled parking, so that you can, so that you can get out of those spaces a little bit easier.
Okay.
Ms. Banks?
Mr. Holly, the concern I have on the way you have your parking is that if you are going to have a line, how are they going to turn around with that kind of turn to get into the spot with other cars coming up behind them to go through the line? And then how are they going to get out? And where are they going to go? I mean, it wouldn't be easier for them to, is there a possibility for them, when they, if they pulled in normally, the other angle, to go around the cars that are in line?
Are you talking about if it were angled this direction?
The other direction, because otherwise, you're asking them to make a complete, almost U-turn with cars coming up behind them that's going to try to get in line. So those people are going to get stuck.
That's why I said it, it looks unusual, but we're not talking about 45-degree angle parking here. It's currently at 90, and if you shifted that to maybe 80 or 70 even, that turn shouldn't be that hard to swing into those spaces, but it would make a lot of difference when you're trying to back out of that space and take off this way. What concerns me about angling it the other way is then you're right, you do have cars. First off, they're backing out into a lane that's supposed to be going the other way, so they have to back out into this lane. And then second off, they're backing, when they leave, they're leaving right through the drive-through.
What I hear Ms. Banks saying is, once, if they're angled in what we'll call the norm, as they back out, they wouldn't be able to come out into that drive and get on to Seven Highway. They would have to go around the building to actually exit.
If they were angled?
Maybe I'm not quite understanding. Let me, are you saying if the parking were angled this way?
If it was angled that way, is there a way for them to back out and go around the outer edge of the drive-through?
And take through that, that would be?
Since they already have permission for access for the other property to go, when they come out, instead of getting in the drive-through, to go on around.
But then they're crossing a lane of traffic to get into their proper lane? Because there's two-way traffic there.
Or is the other two, going that way?
Going this way.
No, if they would go around the other way.
But to get out, as they're backing out of the parking space, they're crossing that lane.
Right, it's the same difference if they go around, they're trying to angle it and back up, and then angle it to get in, depending on what kind of vehicle they have.
They're either crossing it coming in or going out, one way or the other.
Right, but it's just.
I think it's easier to cross it going forward, turning into the spot, than trying to back out across the lane of traffic.
Is there some reason that we have to have two-way traffic along that little section?
Well, it can't be, let me just tell you what, it can't be in one. It can't be one-way traffic going this way, because when the drive-throughs stack up, they can't block any of these spaces, so you would have to probably remove at least three spaces rather than one, so that you did not have stacked cars blocking parked cars. The reason that they're allowed to do this now with the two-way is because this gives them the necessary 24 feet to back out and move that way without interrupting this lane of traffic.
I have a question. Are you adding or deleting any access there to Seven Highway at all?
No.
No, okay. It's the same.
Mr. Tress?
Mr. Holly, I saw those parallel parking spots, and I thought, well, this is a lost art, the parallel park. Because as we all know, a lot of people have difficulty getting between the lines, let alone over far enough in the curb area. And if somebody was sticking out halfway, is there going to be any problem with those cars backing up into a car who may be beyond their designated parking area?
Now, we're talking about the parallel spaces right here?
Yeah. I'm not quite sure why they're there, since they already meet the parking requirement.
I will let the applicant address that question.
And the reason I want to follow up is, is if I'm looking at this, the sidewalk is located outside of the property.
Correct.
So it's in the highway department right-of-way.
That is correct.
So how, what is the distance then from that sidewalk to the, to the lane 4-7 Highway, roughly? Is there going to be?
Within the MODOT, are you talking about within the MODOT right-of-way?
Right.
It would probably not be more than probably two to five feet.
Because, you know, I see a potential conflict with a sidewalk back close to the edge of the, you know, the, the driving lane of a highway. And if you put that sidewalk in, if, if MODOT wanted to, they could remove the sidewalk later, correct? If they needed, had any kind of improvement or anything that they needed to do, or is there some kind of agreement with MODOT that?
There is no agreement with MODOT to save and maintain that sidewalk as it's there. This would be a good opportunity for you to come to our June 13th, our June 13th workshop, which MODOT will be attending, to talk about, to talk about how streets are provided within Blue Springs, and particularly, I know Highway Seven is called Highway Seven, and it acts as a highway, but we need to start thinking about Highway Seven differently than a highway because it runs right through the middle of our community.
And I, and I agree. So if those parallel spots weren't there, and you could widen the, that area, the landscape area along Seven Highway, then couldn't the sidewalk then be an easement along that median area or landscape area?
It could, it definitely could. We could, it, again, I think, I think there are some appurtenances within that right-of-way that are going to cause them to move that sidewalk or adjust it a little bit anyway. But certainly, if they wanted to provide a sidewalk easement through their buffer landscape area, we've allowed that before and allowed the sidewalk then to move onsite as opposed to in the right-of-way, and MODOT has no problem with that, neither do we.
All right, any other questions for staff? Thank you very much, Mr. Holly.
Thank you.
Do we have an applicant here to do a presentation? All right. So the applicant is not here to further explain some of our questions. I will bring it back up here for discussion.
Madam Chair, I just have some concerns on the way it's laid out. With the trash the way it is, the parking the way it is on the side, and the traffic situation, I just have concerns on possibly if they could look at some alternatives. And I'm sure they have, and I'm glad that they're looking at it, but that's some of my concerns.
If I can suggest, maybe what we need to do then is to postpone making any decisions on this until the applicant can join us and further explain and answer some of our questions.
Yeah, I have just real concerns about how this traffic flow is going to work to make the, you know, so you're not ending up blocking cars in all the time. And I want to make sure they've explored all the other options first. And if they're not here, we can't do that.
That's true.
So if no one has any objection, I would make a motion that we postpone this until our next meeting on June 11.
I'll second that. I have a motion as second to put this on our next agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we shall do so.
And I would make the same motion for item number three as well.
Second.
Four.
Item four.
Item four.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Very good. Karen, if you would make sure that that gets on our next agenda and make sure that the applicant is notified. All right. That brings us to Santa Fe preliminary plat and final plat. Again, we will hear these together and vote separately, please.
No, I'll just use this one. Me?
And we apologize to those at home, we're having trouble with the microphone system, so you'll bear with us. All right, Mr. Holly?
Thank you. This is, a request for a preliminary plat and a final plat approval for a .53 acre lot that is located at the southwest corner of Seven Highway and Clark Lane. It is zoned for general business uses, and it is the site of the former pride cleaner, and I understand from today's conversation with Chairman Culpepper that it has been many other things, including a gas station in the past and at least one other different cleaner. Currently, Little Caesars is looking at moving into this particular property, and they are looking at doing away with the drive-up canopy and putting in a drive-through service. In order to do that, they need to plat the property because this property has never been platted, and that constitutes development. In brief, the staff report covers things well. They do meet their minimum setbacks. The existing utility, all utilities are existing. They will need to add a five-foot sidewalk along Seven Highway as well as along Clark Lane. That is reflected in condition number two. Other requirements of the property, again, have either been met or they do not need to meet them if they are non-conforming because they aren't adding 25% to this building, they're simply removing a drive-up service and changing to a drive-through service. Staff recommends approval with three conditions on the preliminary and final plat.
Questions for staff? Mr. Phillips?
I know that because it's not doing the 25% that we don't have to actually go through a site plan and design process. But do we have any drawings to show us how this is going to be arranged on this property? Because I know they're going to have to put some parking spaces in here that don't exist, and exactly, again, how this drive-through is going to function. I'd kind of like to know that, even though it's not part of our approval process.
I do not have any provided information on their site improvements, their site plan other, nor the building, but let me double-check through the report. Lauren Gaudy reviewed that?
I didn't see anything in the packet.
I didn't either.
Yeah, I know that I have not seen that. Are you the applicant for Little Caesars? Great, we have the applicant here, so hopefully he'll be able to clear some of this, some of this information up.
All right, any other questions for staff? Mr. Tressen?
Just, I see that the sidewalk, again, is outside the property line within the MODOT right-of-way.
Good place for it.
Do you think so? Do you see any concerns from a pedestrian walking on that sidewalk and the potential of a, of an incident with a vehicle swerving over or anything? Since there is no separation from the curb or elevation?
That problem, that, yes. To answer your question, yes, I see that as potentially a problem. And I see that as potentially a problem along the entire length of Highway Seven. So the question is, do we now start moving all sidewalk off the right-of-way onto private property, thereby raising maintenance issues and getting easements for every single property for a sidewalk? Or do we, we start to work with MODOT to say, we're going to have sidewalk on your right-of-way, and it needs to be safe pedestrian walkways? It's a question that we haven't, haven't really fully answered yet, but I do, yes, I agree with you, I understand what you're saying. It's close, it's close to some fast-moving traffic.
Any other questions for staff? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
The applicant like to come forward? We have some questions, I think, for you. Speak into the mic if you would, please.
Just hold it up.
Thank you.
Can you hear me? Okay, great, great.
My name is Bill Browning, and I'm representative of the owners. Do I give you my address as well?
No, it's not a public hearing, and I think staff has that, all that information for us.
Okay, okay. To answer your, your question, I do have a very rough, I made a, a plan of showing the, the parking spaces. This was a, it was in my folder, I wasn't prepared to bring that, so, just to give you a little idea of what is going on in the parking. As you can see, the, the two islands there, those, those will be removed, that's where the canopy is currently located. We are adding additional parking in the front, and those in the back are remaining. So we have a total of 11 parking spaces on the property. I believe we had a requirement of six, I believe, according to the report. So this gives you a little bit of a layout of, as you would enter in off of Highway Seven, you would drive around and queue along the north of the building, along the west of the building, and a new pickup area will be located right, right at the east side of the property, of the facade there. Garbage enclosure staying the same, parking surface is staying the same, with the exception of a portion of the parking that will be pulled to the northwest corner of the property to account for the new drive-through that's going in, so we're not reducing any of our previous services.
Okay, anyone have any questions?
Mr. Phillips?
Is this all drive-through and carry-out service?
It is correct. There is no seating in this location.
Any other questions? Mr. Browning, is it possible, do you have another copy of that that staff could have?
You know, I could leave that, yes, yes.
That, or if you would make sure they get a copy, please, for the reference?
We have a, a final plan that we, I can have given to.
That'd be great. Thank you very much. All right, seeing no other questions, thank you, appreciate that. Discussion?
That helps a lot.
Yes.
I can, I can now visualize how this is, this is going to function. And welcome to Blue Springs, by the way.
It'll be nice to have something in that spot. It's been so many things over the years, and, and we hope you're quite successful in that spot. All right, I would entertain a motion.
I would make a motion that we approve preliminary plat, PP 5123437, with the three staff recommendations.
Second.
I have a motion as second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I would entertain a motion for the final plat.
I would make a motion that we approve final plat, PF 5123439, with the three staff recommendations.
Second.
I have a motion as second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, that brings us to other business. When is our training session?
I'm sorry, what was the question, ma'am chair?
Training session coming up?
Yes, Tuesday, June 5.
Everyone have that on their calendars?
Yes.
Has everyone had an opportunity to respond? All right. I'm hungry. All right.
Yes, Karen promises excellent food.
Good.
As always.
Any other items to be brought before this commission? Again, we'd like to thank Mr. Sullivan, and, oh, yes.
I'm sorry, ma'am chair, Mr. Holly reminded me, June 13th as well. We made reference to that earlier, but there'll be Congress for New Urbanism and their consultants, much like we did with EPA and their consultants for the Walkability Audit last month, next month, just two weeks away, we'll be having our kind of design workshop, a little bit more kind of working on paper, more technical aspects of designing walkable urban thoroughfares, focusing on 40-7, that intersection, emphasizing the 40-highway corridor as well. So it's at 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM. Karen, again, promises another excellent meal, so it's free registration, we'll be getting registration pamphlets out to everybody tomorrow, so watch for that in your email, and give any of us a call if you have any questions on that. But free training, national experts will be there, should be some good information, especially getting, getting your pencils out and doing some actual math homework and such. Thank you.
Very good. You're going to put that on your calendars and look for Karen's email with additional info. information.
And that'll be at Central Jackson County Education Center, their training center on 40 Highway. Thank you.
Very good. All right. Again, Mr. Sullivan, we thank you very much for all your service and your hard work.
My pleasure, thank you.
And those who are sitting on the commission, immediately following this meeting is the graduation of class from the Citizens Police Academy. Those of us who have been through it know how wonderful it is and exciting it is to get through the graduation. And so if you have an opportunity to stay, please do so. Appreciate that. Anything else? I'd entertain a motion.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion of second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.